Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize for us being late to get started. At this time, I'll call back into open session the meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for April 19th, beginning at 7:42 PM. Thank everybody for coming out tonight. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Mrs. Peña, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please silence your cellphones and join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. First item on our agenda is programs and presentations. Tonight, we're going to have a presentation from the Financial Futures Report to the Board.
Thank you, President Barron. For the past many weeks, there's been a citizen committee that has been meeting to look at the, our budget and to make recommendations. They have had some long meetings and, but very informative meetings for everyone that was in attendance. I know that Mr. Pampa and Ms. Sullins, Mr. Hogg have been attendants in many of those. But tonight, there'll be a report given by Mr. Chad Bates and on the results of the work of the committee and some recommendations. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pampa, who is the head of the School Board Liaison Committee with the Financial Futures. And, Mr. Pampa, it's my pleasure to turn this over to you. So I've already introduced Mr. Bates and told him a little bit about what's been going on, so.
Well, thank you Superintendent McCullough and thank you, President Barron. Mr. Bates, thank you for being here today. And I'm not going to say too much at the beginning. I'd like to make some remarks after your presentation, so please go ahead.
Well, I'm going to kick this off. I could make a, just to give a brief overview of kind of where we are. We are still working on the preliminary budget for next year. We expect that we will have that complete within the next couple of weeks. But we have been meeting with the Financial Futures Committee since early February. We began by making some presentations on our current budget and showing them some forecasts of where we think we're headed. And so I'm going to share with you the forecast that we showed them last. This is a multi-year forecast. First column shows how we actually performed last year, the 2010-2011 year. The second column is the 2011-2012 budget year. And you'll notice it says 10 months at the top, and that's because we're changing our fiscal year this year. This is a transition year to move us to a new budget calendar. And so the fiscal year actually began September 1st this year and will end June 30th, so it's a short period. And because of that transition, that we have a one-time accounting change that will actually help us boost our fund balance in this transition year. So you can see that we actually expect to have a budget surplus of $37 million in this fiscal year. And looking on out then to the future, taking a very early stab at what we expect next year's budget to look like with the things that we knew at the time that we have built this forecast, we're expecting to see a surplus in the neighborhood of about $7.7 million. And again, this is an early estimate. There are some things that we know will be added into the budget. Personnel Department is wrapping up the staffing process as we speak. We know that there will be some additional units that come to us out of that staffing process that are not yet reflected in here due to enrollment changes and some program changes. We have already factored into the projection for next year 31 additional teaching positions at the high schools that the Board authorized earlier this year to help allow the teachers at the high schools to have the daily conference period. And then you can see the forecast on out, and I won't spend any time on that. But the FFC group had this forecast in mind as they did their work and made their recommendations and considered those recommendations. And so with that, it's my pleasure to introduce Chad Bates, and he's already been introduced. And I will also share with you that Charles Brady is the chairperson of the FFC this year, and he could not be here tonight. He had a business commitment that he had to take care of. So we miss him. And with that, I'm going to turn this to Chad.
Thank you, Cindy. President Barron, Superintendent McCullough, distinguished members of the Board, it's my privilege to stand before you to give the report of the Financial Futures Committee. I think it's important to note that having served on this last year, it was a tremendously different experience this year. And to those in the community who may be watching this, I think that what was exciting to me personally and to most of the other committee members is that we have some real opportunities to make some changes different than last year, where we were focused on having to do reductions and cuts and that sort of things. And I think the spirit this year was more of how can we improve the district? How can we perhaps change some things in terms of how we do business in the district? And how can we improve the overall educational experience for our students? So having had three kids that have gone through the district and are all doing well now after their experience in the ISD, I find it exciting as a citizen to be able to report that. So for, certainly the Board is familiar with the purpose, but for those citizens that may be listening, I'm not going to read most of the recommendations tonight. I want to try to give you more of the spirit and the flavor behind them, because everybody's got copies of those, and I'm sure they'll be online for those citizens, but to not take too much time in just reading. But I do want to go through that little bit of history. Goes back to 1992, and this was previously named the Citizens Budget Review Committee, and then since changed to the Financial Futures Committee. But it's a board-appointed committee of citizens, cross-reference people from all walks of life. Educators are on the committee, administrators are representative, and certainly the bulk of the committee is citizens and taxpayers. And then we meet and deliberate. There's probably, I don't know how many hours it was that we estimated, Cindy, but over the six or seven meetings and then multiple subcommittee meetings, not to mention the probably thousands of emails that were exchanged back and forth with subcommittee members. Just suffice it to say that, you know, certainly in hundreds of hours is a low estimate, probably over 1,000 hours of conscious thought went into this. A lot of people did individual research in addition to that. So the membership of the committee, and I'm not going to read everybody's names, I do want to thank Charles Brady, who did another excellent job. I think this is his third year, if I'm not mistaken, sending to service, chairperson of the committee, did an excellent job of keeping us on task and keeping sometimes vigorously debated debates in line and in check to where we kept things civil. And that's not always an easy task with a diverse group of independent thinkers. So I do want to thank Charles and recognize him. And then on your screen are the remaining members of the committee. And I also like to thank Mr. Pampa, Mr. Hogg, and Ms. Sullins for being on the Liaison Committee for the Board. The dedication that each of you as Board members brings to the table is amazing to me. And then you add to that that they were coming to all of our meetings on top of other board meetings and what have you, and other duties, and I just want to thank you personally for the concern and care that you put into process. And I'd like to just say to the citizens that may be listening, we've got a very passionate set of Board members, and I appreciate each one of you for your service. In addition to that, I would be absolutely remiss if we did not acknowledge, and I'm not going to again read everybody's names, but I asked Cindy to put a slide in here to acknowledge the senior administrative team who took time away from their families in addition to their regular workload, and they're all sitting over here on the front row. And the transparency that they gave in terms of answering questions, meeting with us at additional meetings outside of the committee meetings, being present at each one of the committee meetings, you know, it's just remarkable to me. And I think that we've got a top-flight management team, Mr. McCullough, that you're certainly managing, and I appreciate each one of y'all, particularly the transparency and sometimes educating people that it probably would come to you as like a kindergarten student sometimes, and you're having to bring us up to graduate-level students on things like Chapter 21 issues and all those kind of issues that we discussed. And I thank you for your professionalism, your dedication, quick to develop numbers for us so we could compare things back and forth in terms of dollars and cents. And without their involvement, we certainly wouldn't have the kind of recommendations that I think that we do have. The charge this year changed a little bit, and again, I give credit to the Board Liaison Committee for this. And I think that it's important to note that there's a couple of things that I kind of tried to remind the committee from time to time, that our charge was to bring some actionable items in front of the Board, recommendations that we could recommend to the Board that the Board could actually vote on. And that's not always been the past, in the past been the case. Having served on a number of committees like this for multitude of different governmental entities, it's frustrating if you serve and then nothing ever happens. And what I'm most optimistic about this year is that we're going to have some things happen as a result of the recommendations. And that credit goes to, again, the Board Liaison Committee that developed our charge. It should be noted also, for record, that the Board Liaison Committee appointed the various members of the committee. Again, keep in mind a diverse cross-section of the community and various schools that were represented, as well as educators and administrators within the district. One of the things we did is reviewed the MGT study, which is a consultant study that was presented last year to the Board. We considered it in our FFC committee last year to a deep degree. We did review some things that had not been implemented, and there are some recommendations that address some of those to some degree. A big portion of our charge this year was to review our current staffing methods in relation to state law, and particularly as it relates to student-to-teacher ratio. Just as an example, at our high school level right now, for this school year, the latest statistics are, we were close to 25% of our classrooms had 15 or fewer students in them. And for clarification purposes, that is one teacher to 15 or fewer students. And that was broken out in as few of numbers of one teacher to five or fewer students and one teacher to 10 or fewer students and then 15. So that's one of the things that we have gave a great deal of thought and analysis into. And then again, from our administrators, they helped us become educated about some of the restrictions that we fall under, unfortunately, under state law, that we'll not make a quick fix on any of this, but hopefully we've got some recommendations that we can begin down the process of saving some money and bringing some efficiencies in. Again, I think that what's exciting about this this year is that if we bring some efficiencies in, then we can do some other things. And we actually have some things that we're talking about and recommending that we do to reallocate those funds, again, to increase the educational experience for our children. Certainly, a review of the general operating budget was at the very beginning of our process, particularly important for those that had not been familiar with the process and not served on the committee before. And again, I thank Cindy and Tony and her team for helping us understand those different cost drivers. I'll state that openly, and the Board members are certainly aware of this, but for those citizens out there that are not familiar with it, the bulk of the expenses for the district fall back on personnel costs. This is obviously, education is not a widget-maker type enterprise. It's people and trying to learn, and so not surprisingly, teachers and administrators are the, by far and away, the largest item in terms of budget expense. I also want to note, and I give credit to the Board and to the administration, that one of the things that was highlighted is that Arlington Independent School District has one of the most efficient, in terms of dollars and cents spent, administrator teams of any district out there. And again, it's a compliment to the Board and to the various professionals that are involved at the district level. And then finally, the last part of the charge is, of course, to report that we're doing today consensus recommendations. As I committed to my fellow committee members, I view my role tonight as to really talk about the mind of the committee and giving some, both sides of the persuasions in some cases. But I'm not here to stand before you to give my personal views. I'm here to give you more of the mind of the committee and the recommendations. So this is the meeting schedule that's before you. We began our first budget overview in February, early February. We had one little interruption called the Tornado Alley Hit that we had to have rescheduled the meeting, but, and we finished our last meeting just after 10:30 on Tuesday evening. And again, to turn all those recommendations around and get this report together, the credit goes to the administration, particularly to Cindy Powell and her team. Okay, on a summary basis, we had 38 recommendations that were presented by various committee members or subcommittee members. Any member on the committee was free to make a recommendation. And then we broke this year into some different subcommittees to try to get a little more depth, in-depth analysis on certain categories. Of those 38 recommendations, we had 21 that received majority support. Again, as these items were presented by whoever the sponsor was or the sponsoring group was, each member of the committee had a chance to opine and express their opinion about the particular recommendation. Sometimes there was some, again, some vigorous debate. And then we voted, and 55% of those 38 recommendations did receive majority support. Again, in contrast to last year, where our focus was almost totally on how do we reduce spending, this year because of the projected surplus, we actually have some items that are coming, that we're recommending to you that would be a net increase to the budget. And budget increases in terms of recommendations, a total just under $3.2 million, and some budget reductions about $133,000. Now, it should be noted that there are many of the reductions, or excuse me, the recommendations, that a quantifiable financial impact was not found. It may require additional study. It may depend on how the Board acts on the recommendations. So there are certainly other areas that are in the recommendations that would create significant additional savings as well as significant additional spending. So I think it's important that the public understand that and certainly want to drive it home to the Board members that were not present at the meetings. Okay, so let's get into some of the actual recommendations. And I'm not, again, I'm not going to read these. I want to try to, I want to give you the sense of the overview. I'm going to start with a majority of yes votes. One of the areas that was discussed at great length, both at the teacher-to-staff ratio subcommittee and staffing classroom size subcommittee, as well as at the broader committee of the Financial Futures Committee, was the concept of employing virtual instruction to the district. And one of the recommendations that was made was that we need to look at how can we become a technology leader, not only in virtual learning, but also across the board, giving our teachers and our students the full advantages of technology. And I understand that there is a draft that the Board is working on and probably met and discussed somewhat earlier today that talks about our commitment to technology. But we felt like as a committee, it was important that we give some input from the committee to the Board to give you a sense that we, 100%, in this case, 14 yeses and no nos and no abstentions, support the Board establishing a full commitment of using technology in our classrooms for both our teachers' fulfillment and their ability to improve their teaching as well as for our teacher, or excuse me, our students, obviously. Now, the nice thing is, this is not an item that would hit the general operating fund. There are some bond funds available. I know that there's competing desires for those funds and competing interests, but one of the things that we wanted to state just openly, that we have an absolute commitment to using technology and being a leader in that area in the Arlington Independent School That dovetails somewhat into the next category, which again was an area that we did a tremendous amount of discussion on, had a lot of research. And that's the concept of really beginning to employ and implement a virtual learning curriculum within the school district. Now, this is not something that is new or leading edge. I think it's important people understand that. There are districts across the United States and certainly in the state of Texas that are already doing this in a large way. We have had, we've dabbled in it somewhat ourselves as a district, but it was, it was the opinion, the vast majority of the committee's opinion, that we need to not just dabble in it and not just study it, but we need to move forward and implement it within our district. So we made a recommendation to begin, let me give you a little background. You cannot become a provider of curriculum where the district actually is teaching their own curriculum until the state approves your, certifies your curriculum. So we're going to take this kind of in stages, and you'll see a couple of different recommendations that address this. But we recommended that the Board establish authorized funding of $400,000 to provide 500 students at a minimum at the high school level, a virtual class of some type in the next school year. We also recommended establishing a virtual lab at every high school that would have at least 25 stations associated with that lab, where those students could go to take those classes and build for the future of an ongoing virtual classroom or virtual learning curriculum, as well as establishing a position of a virtual classroom coordinator that would be responsible for oversight of the program under the able administration that we have. Bond funds could be used for the bulk of this purchase, because there is hardware cost associated, and we're talking about computers and microphones and headsets and that sort of thing. And then there's a, obviously, there's a one-time annual cost of tuition, and it would require also funding for some teachers' assistance and the virtual instruction coordinator. And that passed by a vote of 13 to nothing with one abstention. Dovetailing on that to the next level would be that we have recommended that the administration design and implement a plan to provide, as a provider of virtual classroom courses, to other districts and other individuals throughout the state of Texas. And the goal here is not only to be a provider, but I want to emphasize what was talked about a lot, is that if we're going to do this, if we're going to become the world-class school district that we all really want to have, then we need to become the premier provider, and I want to emphasize that word, of virtual learning instruction within the state of Texas as a supplier. For those of you who are not educated on this, the state legislature actually allows students in other school districts throughout the state of Texas to take classes virtually that are provided by certified courses providers. And we could actually become a provider which would have a benefit of not having an expense to our students like the prior recommendation did in ongoing years. But we actually could generate this into a revenue stream, an income stream, of having other students throughout the state of Texas paying to enroll in our courses. And I'm particularly reminded of some of our rural school districts that don't have maybe some AP classes that they'd like to offer some of their kids, and we could provide those type of classes. I think that what's really exciting about this concept is I envision the ability to attract the absolute best of the best educators in a particular field that have a lot of knowledge and a lot of passion and great presentation skills that can really bring that alive. And that's not to take away from any teacher that's in any classroom now, my hat's off to them, but I think that there's a chance to really enhance the quality of education by having this type of a learning approach. And let's face it, we're in the year 2012, and technology's with us whether we like it or not. I know I'd rather talk to my kids on the phone instead of texting them sometimes, but if I want to communicate, sometimes I have to text with them. And that's the world that our kids are growing up in, and we can either embrace it or we can kind of be left behind. And there are a number of studies that I've read that acknowledge that by, in different estimates, 2017, 2018, 2019, estimates as high as 50 to 60% of all high school learning is anticipated to be virtually. There are studies that state that China's educational advances with their children are moving well past those in the United States, primarily because they have employed a huge virtual classroom learning approach. And so if we're going to compete not only with other schools and other school districts, but greater, in the greater world, global economy, we need to embrace technology and get through that. Now, there's a right way and a wrong way to go about some of this, of course, and so we're going to see some recommendations that we've got here a little bit later on to try to put some checks and balances in in terms of quality and a very thoughtful approach about how we implement this to where we implement it the correct way. Okay, the next recommendation, number 20, which passed by a vote of 11 yes votes, one no vote, and two abstentions, goes a little different direction, but it was to incent for the School Board to direct administration to develop a program to incent teachers with single certifications, to begin expanding their certifications beginning in the next school year, with the cost of those certifications and testing being borne by the school district and possibly even some type of stipend or an incentive. Now, we didn't get real particular in terms of recommending how the Board administration structured this. We just wanted to state openly that we know that for the small classroom sizes, one of the things that became very, very apparent is that over the last eight or 10 years, new teachers that are coming out of the education system in the state of Texas are focused on one certification. And that really hamstrings the administration to be able to use teachers for multiple classes, as an example. An example might be, I guess, a French teacher that also is very fluent in Spanish. And if they had certification in both classes, then they would give a lot of scheduling flexibility where they could teach one course, one period, another course, another period. Or somebody might be a history teacher that also is certified in political science. And the list goes on and on. I'm just trying to give you a little bit of flavor. But by having multiple certifications and really encouraging our teachers to get multiple certifications, it gives the administration the ability to begin over time to address the classroom size, again, just under 25% of our classes at the high school level, 15 or fewer students. Now, I talked about checks and balances of a virtual classroom instruction. One of the things that we wanted to do was request that the administration report to the Board on an annual basis, if not more than that, performance results of virtual learning as compared to traditional classroom learning, so that we consciously manage the process of making sure that we're staying on track, that there's not a dilution. Some people think of virtual learning as just somebody getting on a computer and watching a PowerPoint presentation and almost like an open book test. There are multiple forms of virtual learning that are out there, that are used in industry now, that are used certainly at the collegiate level, and again, successfully used in other districts at the high school and even down to the kindergarten level. And so, but we do feel like that it's prudent for us as a district to make sure that we're comparing the quality of education, not just that there may be some cost savings associated with, but, you know, driving the quality home to where we really are making sure that we're giving the kids the chance to really learn what they should be learning. In addition to that, there would be an analysis of what additional class course offerings should be provided and what are the benefits that there might be, as well as estimated savings. Again, what's exciting to me about the savings opportunity here is to be able to redeploy some of those dollars and cents towards at-risk kids or potentially smaller classroom sizes at the lower grade levels, those kinds of things. So it's really trying to get very efficient, and then we can address some other challenges with the savings that are associated with that. To help the administration implement, I guess, the best business practices of a virtual learning environment, we recommended by a vote of 10 yes votes, three no votes, and one abstention, that the Board appoint a special committee of Board members, citizens, administrators, and teachers to really kind of drive, how do we become that premier virtual learning curriculum source and provider, and to maximize our savings and our technology? And this could be, you know, again, kind of an ongoing committee that may meet on a monthly may meet on a monthly basis and put some checkpoints out there and does some, you know, some goal planning and different things, and really maybe delves into exactly what type of virtual learning do we want to have, because there's so many different ones. I'm familiar with some in our industry, for instance, that you can monitor 100% of the time how much somebody's actually paying attention to the curriculums being provided. You can have pop tests that keep, that pop in to make sure somebody's really digesting, and it can be real-time information that's feedback to the instructor about who's grasping this concept, who's not. Do I need to spend more time, again, to really delve deeply into a particular subject? So, don't think in terms of just somebody looking at a PowerPoint and sitting at a computer. There are, there are ways that you can have virtual learning that are fully interactive in today's technology. And there's also ways that you could have grading, for instance. I've, I've heard some people say, well, you know, what's that really going to do for us? So, you have a virtual class, it's still one teacher, and they can't have more than 25 or 30 students because they can't grade the papers. That's not the case with technology today. You can have grades that are done on a multiple choice exam for a certain curriculum and have the grades posted instantaneously after somebody's finished a test. So, you don't necessarily have to have a 1 to 30 or 1 to 25 classroom size to an instructor, you could have one to a much larger number than that classroom size, again, using technology. And I understand that we already have that technology at our fingertips, it's already built into our servers and what have you to be able to do that. The next recommendation, number 31, that we look at our, and perform an annual review of our course offerings. I believe the number is somewhere just over 500 course offerings that we currently offer within Arlington Independent School District. I think the mind of the committee was that we want to make sure that all of those are justified, certainly, and so it's appropriate to have a policy in place that the administration reports to the board on those. And, and we particularly wanted to focus on those that may have 15 or fewer on each campus and delve into, is this a candidate, for instance, for, in some cases, it might be elimination of a course, but probably in more cases, how can we have an alternative learning, like the virtual classroom environment, that might be able to give us some efficiencies and, and possibly even expand our curriculum as opposed to restrict our curriculum, so that we give our young people as many chances as we possibly can to have some, some learning experiences in a variety of different curriculum. There was some discussion about restricting the number of classrooms, and I want to bring that to the board's attention, but it was overwhelmingly rejected by the committee. The committee's overall mind was that we wanted to have as much curriculum as possible to give as many opportunities as we possibly can. An example of that might be one of the virtual classrooms that, that students in AISD are currently taking, and that's a Chinese course that they're taking virtually through the Texas Virtual School Network. And so, there's, there's a number of students that are taking that course, and, and probably it's not economically feasible to provide that type of instruction within AISD, but we certainly could find an expert that could put a, a course together and become a provider of that type of curriculum. And last, that was passed on a, a yes vote of 14, no abstentions and no, no votes, was to request administration to conduct an annual review of small classroom sizes of less than 15. And, and again, with the goal being that we, we want to make sure that we are more efficient so we can redeploy those dollars to other areas that may have some needs within our educational system. There were a, a number of recommendations. One, one recommendation in particular was to try to have a goal in mind. I think the mind of the committee was, in terms of, of what percentage of classrooms less than 15 should be eliminated over the next year or two. I think the mind of the committee was, let's leave that up to the board to make that decision and give that directive. But certainly, there was a lot of discussion about the merits of having a goal set in place for next school year and the following school year. It's important to note, for those citizens that don't know this, because of state laws, these kind of things, any changes we're talking about here, whether it's virtual learning, eliminating or reducing classroom, lower classroom size, they're going to take some time. They're, they're going to take some implementation over a period of years. I think the mind of the committee was, let's get started. Let's get the ball rolling to where we can realize some substantial savings two, three, four years down the road. As an example, in terms of giving some specifics, the administration calculated that there could be well over a $3 million annual savings if we could just reduce the number of classrooms that were 15 or fewer students by as little as 25%. Okay, so, we're, we're talking about a substantial amount of money that could be redeployed towards other areas. Let me back up here. So, the, so the total cost of these recommendations that related primarily to classroom size and virtual instruction was 570,000. But again, I want to reiterate, it helps us go down the path of eliminating some of the smaller classroom sizes, and that's where the real savings begin to, to occur. So, we're talking about making an investment in order to get a return on investment in the future. Okay, the next key category was in the area of compensation, and I'm going to go through the majority of yes votes for that area. The first one was that we conduct a market study for CTMs and land tax and adjust salaries accordingly. That passed by a vote of yes, of 15 yes votes and two no votes and two abstentions. I will say this, that as, as a businessperson who has IT staff on my, my own business, the amount of money that we're paying some of these people that have a very large impact in terms of use of technology in our schools is really, really low. And there was a, kind of a, a mind of the committee that we just want to make sure that we are competitive, at least with other committee, other districts in the area, and maybe even do some studies about, could you have a higher caliber person that covers multiple campuses? The next recommendation was to perform a similar study on our assistant principal positions with a district standard comparison group and adjust salaries accordingly. There was a lot of discussion about how some of the more tenured teachers could be at a higher pay grade than some assistant principals in cer- certain areas. There was a recommendation that was kind of tabled or withdrawn that addressed, specifically addressing that, that would have made assistant principals' salaries higher than, than those tenured teachers, but the mind of the committee was, we don't think that we need to make that recommendation to the board, but we did, did want to at least ask for a market study to be performed so that the board has the kind of information that they need to make a prudent decision. Number 13 was, again, a great deal of discussion on this. With our budget surplus, the committee felt like that, that we do have the ability to give an across-the-board raise to the district. There was some discussion about, again, defining a recommendation in terms of percent, what have you. At the end of the day, the mind of the committee was just to state that we support giving some type of a, a cross-the-board increase. I'll also state that the mind of the committee was to make sure we do so in a financially prudent manner. We all know that the, the legislators can change things a couple of years from now. We'd like to have, having come out of some years that, that we didn't have surpluses, we'd like to have some, some chance to, to build some things up through proper management by the board and administrators. We're in a great position. And then I'll just note that a 1% across-the-board raise for all employees within the district approximates about $3 million. And that, that recommendation passed by a vote of 15 to 1 with one abstention. Another area that we discussed a, a great deal was a recommendation that the board implement a performance-based pay program. Currently, it's, it's more in steps or ladders and, and primarily five-year increments, as I understand it. And, and we would like to see some movement towards performance pay for the district. Again, leaving that up to the administration and board in terms of how to actually implement that, but there was an overwhelming support for this. I'll note that one of the things that was discussed a great deal is it's imperative to have some type of a performance management or, or monitoring system, measurement system, if you will, and we don't currently have that, so that dovetails right into the next recommendation, and that's that the board hire a human resources firm to assist us, some experts in this area, over the next two-to-three-year period of establishing a performance-based implementation plan, and then going into design, implementation, career counseling's of, of educators and others within, in the district, and just overall education. And we were not able to estimate the cost of that. Obviously, that would require a public request for proposal to, to look at the most qualified firms that are out there. We did feel like that, that this is an area that it makes sense to have an outside consultant advise the board and the administrators on. In the area of staffing, next major category, there was a lot of discussion about the need to add back what was previously cut receptionists at the junior high school level, and that passed by a vote of 17 yes votes, one no vote, and one abstention. Another area that was discussed at great length was the area of guidance tech preparer professionals. These are people that assist our counselors so the counselors can really spend the bulk of their time helping children that might be at risk or might have a challenge going on their lives. They particularly, the guidance techs, as I understand it, particularly are helpful with administration of state-mandated testing that requires a great deal of security and a great deal of confidentiality, and we're really putting a lot on our counselors. It was the feeling of the committee to, to not have some support in that area, and actually it's caused some of our administrators or principals and assistant principals to have to kind of fill that gap a little bit. And we got a lot of feedback that they also caused a lot of our counselors to have to leave the primary role that they're there for, which is, again, to help a child that might be at risk or might be having a challenge, and if those days that they were testing, and it's a huge number of days, apparently, that there's testing going on at the school level, they, they don't have that flexibility. So, we, we have recommended by a vote of nine yes votes, zero no votes, and five abstentions to reinstate guidance tech preparer professionals. In the order, in the category of personnel, again, this is the, kind of dovetails into the prior recommendation about going with a performance pay program. We recommended that we adopt an achievement metric for performance evaluation that will allow us for improved performance evaluation. That passed by a vote of nine yeses, two nos, and two abstentions. The next recommendation was to require a study of the board policy at DEC Local, looking to basically address the issue of teachers that may take off a Monday or a Friday, particularly associated with a holiday, take a personal leave day with sometimes very little to no notice to their administration, which we found that was having a real challenge, sometimes of even getting a substitute teacher to fill that. And, and there was basically a desire on the part of the committee. We weren't really sure whether there was a real challenge with this. Some people felt like it was a major challenge, particularly some of the administrators on the committee, but others did not, were not sure that it was really a challenge. So, what we've recommended to the board is that we have a study done by the administrators and reports to the board to see if it truly is a, a challenge or not. And the category total for personnel in terms of expenses was 25,000, and that solely went back to the achievement metric for performance evaluations.
Mr. Bates, hold on a second. Mr. Pomple?
I do just want to make a clarification that, that last recommendation was completely independent, and well before the article in the, in the Fort Worth Star-Telegram came out, I believe yesterday, with the issues they were having, where as many as 20, as 15% of, or there's some percentage of those absences were there, had nothing to do with that. We made this recommendation days, several days before that, and it was completely independent. I can't speak to where the recommendation came from, but as we discussed it on, on, in this committee, it didn't have anything to do with that. It was well before that article came out in the paper, so.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for that disclaimer. Mr. Bates, Mr. Bates, go ahead.
Disclaimers are always good, right? The next recommendation was in the area of operations, and it was felt that we needed to really do a great job of developing a master facilities plan with a prioritized plan of improvements that, and, and really, this was largely supported because of the concern of some security issues on some of our campuses, and we wanted to make sure that we addressed some of those, but also just in terms of, you know, the facilities plan to address maintenance, both for schools, athletic facilities, et cetera. This was estimated cost of about $600,000, and it passed unanimously with a vote of 14 yes votes, no, zero no votes, and zero abstentions. One of the major costs, and we've made some great strides in the last couple of years, but one of the major costs that we have as district in addition to staffing is our energy expense. And many of us have children that have gone through the schools that would take an extra sweatshirt along because they were cold in some classes and that sort of thing at different times of the year. So, it was recommended that, that we have, the, the recommendation was voted on, was a one-half of one degree increase in average temperature. I understand from the administration that that's not possible, it has to be in 1%, 1 degree increments, but the estimated savings of just one degree on average across the district was estimated to be 133,000 in savings on an annual basis, and that passed by 14 yes votes, no abstentions, and no no votes. This is another area that, that could, has some potential savings, and the recommendation was to, to have all coaches and extracurricular staff get licensed to be able to drive buses and other transport vehicles at a cost that would be paid for by the district, so that the district could have at least 75% of driving for extracurricular events done by actual coaches and extracurricular staff. First-year implementation cost, and this includes the after-cost of paying for the licensing and education of driving, the, getting licensed to drive the larger buses and what have you, savings of 38,000 the first year, and then future estimated annual savings a little over 130,000. That was passed by a yes vote of 10 votes, no, three votes, and abstention of one vote. Another unanimous recommendation was to run an annual savings campaign that encourages individual campuses to save one year over another in areas maybe of electricity use or any other savings that, that have, that they may have at the campus level for discretionary expenses, and to actually potentially even give some, some type of incentive back to the site-based committees or what have you, or the individual administrators of those schools, to where they have an incentive to set the thermostats up, or, and sometimes in the wintertime, maybe set them down, and saving on paper costs, discretionary items that they may have. And it was felt like this, this might unite the, the schools to achieve some goals and maybe free up some money that they could use to redeploy towards needs at, at the individual campus level. So, the total operations category recommendations were a little over $500,000 additional costs to the budget. Some noteworthy no votes, staffing adjustments to large elementary and junior high school classes. There were three different categories of recommendations that were made and considered by the committee. One was to address English, math, and science classes greater than a 22 to 1 student-teacher ratio with a junior high level. One was to address greater than, or to provide one additional teacher for grades K through 4 that had classes greater than 20. And another one was to add an additional teacher for grades 5 and 6 that had a student-teacher ratio greater than 25. Now, I think it's important to note that, that all three of these measures failed and did not reach a, a majority vote. However, it purely, it was, it was very apparent, it was purely because of the price tag associated with the financial impact is just overwhelming to make these kind of additions that we're talking about to achieve these classroom sizes. There's also some physical limitations involved, particularly at the elementary school level in terms of classroom sizes and what have you. The, I think the spirit of the committee or the mind of committee was, as we become more efficient on some of these other areas and realize some of the savings that can be projected by reducing or, or I guess, right-sizing classroom sizes at the high school level, employing technology to have some efficiencies and potential income streams at, at the virtual learning level, that perhaps it gives us an opportunity to redeploy and revisit some of these and give at-risk students or, or entry-level students in the lower primary grades a little, little better staffing, childhood-to-teacher ratio. So, that, again, is, I think is one of the opportunities as we employ some of these things. It wasn't a matter of not having a desire to reduce the staff room, or, or excuse me, the teacher-to-student ratios, it was more of a desire to make sure that we are financially prudent going forward and, and we don't go back to a deficit spending situation. Another majority no vote, there was a, a recommendation to terminate a longevity bonus. That failed by a vote of one yes vote and no 18 votes, and the overall mind of the committee was, those employees were hired and represented under those longevity bonuses that go back many, many years, and, and we didn't feel like it was fair to kind of change the rules at, at this point in time, late in the game. We wanted to honor the commitments given to those employees. We wanted to honor the commitments given to those employees. Another was to transition elementary and junior high librarians to halftime positions. That also failed by one yes vote to eighteen no votes. And that concept would be a librarian covering multiple campuses. One of the things that was brought out by a number of committee members during this discussion was as we become a technology leader, there's a great deal of opportunity for librarians to really embrace that technology and be at the forefront of providing that technology to our students and as a resource to our campuses. And so we did not want to dilute that back to a halftime position at the elementary and junior high levels. Another one was, again, getting very specific, and I touched on this a little bit earlier, that the board charged the administration with reducing the classroom sizes, less than fifteen students by a minimum of twenty-five percent beginning the next school year and be, actually being realized in 2013 and 2014. There was a lot of discussion, debate about that, but it did not pass. Again, I think that the mind of the committee was let the board, the administration set the goals and set the criteria to realize the savings. So that did not pass by a vote of four yes votes, six no votes, and four abstentions. There was a proposal, a recommendation to dramatically reduce the current offerings of some five hundred and twelve offerings, something down to three hundred and twenty-five offering range, and this is different classes, different curriculum. And that did not pass. There was zero yes votes, ten no votes, and four abstentions. I think the overall mind of the committee was we don't want to dilute the great amount of offerings of our curriculum. We want to see how we can maybe look for ways to enhance that instead. There was a proposal, this had an overlap with several other proposals that actually passed, but there was a proposal to eliminate under-enrolled classes unless they were judged to be critically academically important. But because there were some overlaps and two other recommendations that were acted on by the committee, there were zero yes votes and fourteen no votes, so that did not pass. There was another recommendation, again, that overlapped some of the other ones that did pass, was to provide access to virtual, state of Texas virtual classrooms, the TXVSN course load, and perhaps the Houston Independent School District load for a two-year trial period. That did not pass by a vote of zero yes votes, six no votes, and eight abstentions. Again, I want to emphasize that there was a lot of discussion about do we, do we kind of try this on a trial basis? Do we study it? The mind of the committee overwhelmingly, as you saw in the earlier vote, was it's time to implement, and that's our recommendation. There was recommendation to, again, I think this may be a little bit of overlap from what I already touched on, junior high classes, English, math, and science. That measure did not pass, as I touched on just a little bit ago. Those were in the significant no vote categories. Again, the mind was, of the committee, was not that we wouldn't like to have some better teacher-to-staff ratios, but we simply can't afford it right now. And the same thing goes for the elementary to K through four and the elementary fifth and sixth grade categories. Okay, I've covered a lot of materials in a short period of time, but I'd like to open it up to any questions that the board may have for us.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. I sure appreciate it, though, just probably a few questions. Dr. Reich?
Thank you, President Barron. Thank you very much, Mr. Bates. That was a lot of information. And thank you very, very much to the committee. Great, great work, really great work, lots of time and dedication for our kids and to help us out as a board. I really do appreciate that sacrifice that you've all made and the thoughtful consideration you've taken into all these issues. I will have a, have to say, a comment that there's many of these things that are very similar to our strategic plan draft that we have been working on. It's kind of funny there. So what that tells me is it's a reassurance to me that what we have been working on is the will, as you being representative of the community, that this is the direction we need to go. So I really appreciate that. There was a lot of affirmation in this document. There was a couple of items I wanted to ask on clarification on the votes themselves. There was a total of twenty-five or so committee members, and there seemed to be fourteen to sixteen or eighteen.
Good question. We had the recommendation votes on two different meeting nights.
Okay.
So there's a changing variety of people that could or could not make it on those nights because of other conflicts. And then as the evenings wore on a little bit later and later, some of the people would leave, but we'd make sure we kept a quorum. But that addresses why there may be different numbers of votes in each category.
Okay. And in the situations, there is obviously one night, there seemed to be fourteen people present, as far as the votes were always fourteen total. So that did not in any way, seeing that's such a high number percentage-wise, it's close to forty percent of total committee as far as absence, that doesn't state any dissatisfaction with those people that weren't there that night in voting or anything?
I don't believe so.
Okay, good.
I think that it's important to note that the fourteen were the fourteen that were eligible to vote. If a committee member missed more than, I believe it was two, correct, Cindy? Two meetings, they were not eligible to vote on recommendations.
Okay, very good.
The thought being they hadn't been there to hear some of the discussions that might help them make an informed decision.
Right, very good, very good.
Can I interject something?
Sure.
That night when we had fourteen votes, that was the reschedule from the tornado night.
Sure.
So it was a meeting that we had on the calendar as a tentative meeting, so we had the rooms reserved and everything already, but it was not a for-sure meeting. And so when we missed the night of the tornado, that's when we did that meeting. And so we started it earlier as well at six. So the numbers were a little bit smaller. Traditionally, we were having about twenty people, for the most part, to the meetings, but that one was our smallest meeting, but it was a reschedule.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great. Let's see. On the recommendations, numbers, I gave my glasses here, number four and six regarding the market salary study for the CTMs and then for APs. Obviously, for APs, I would assume that's the educational market. On the CTMs, is that educational market for what classes, what districts classify as CTMs?
There was discussion both ways.
Okay.
There was discussion about what do we need to be competitive with other districts?
Right.
And there was discussion about what do we need to be competitive with industry? And those are two dramatically different numbers, of course.
That's right.
That's where, that's what led to the discussion about perhaps there could be some analysis, could you have somebody that covers more than one school that's at a higher education level, higher expertise level, and a higher salary level? And still maybe even achieve some savings associated with that without losing expertise and maybe even increasing our expertise.
Okay.
So that's the.
So that was the intent, then?
That was the intent.
To go outside the typical education market?
Yes, sir.
Data, okay, that's perfect. And on the regards to staffing, the recommendation, recommendations, three and twelve, to add receptionists back to junior highs and the guidance tech paraprofessionals, those obviously were things that we had to eliminate last year, along with many other items. And I want to know what discussion, if any, occurred with the committee regarding those other areas? For example, kindergarten TAs, I know is going to be a hot-button issue, and there's probably several others. Was those discussions, did they occur? And if so, how, what was the prioritization that these made it and those didn't?
The kindergarten TA's position was not discussed, and I was president at every meeting.
Okay.
I'm aware of the issue and certainly aware of the need. It was felt that at the junior high level, it was causing a real, real problem to not have the receptionist, that they actually was taking away from either administrators or other teachers, or because of security reasons, volunteers may not be eligible to serve in that type of capacity. So it was felt like that both, I guess, from a goodwill perspective to the community, that not having a receptionist there that was a full-time person was really damaging the credibility in the community. People could walk in, not be anybody at the front desk, those kinds of things. The guidance tech was really more of a, I think, a profound recognition that the security and confidentiality of the testing material, taking our counselors away from what their primary emphasis should be, which is to help a child that might be in need at a given point in time. That was the primary reason and thrust behind that. I'd also like to note that I asked the question of the educator members of our committee that since we have finite resources that the board has to try to allocate, and we, you know, we had already voted previously as a committee to give some type of an increase and give you all the direction that we wanted to have some type of salary increase, you know, if we bring the guidance techs back, it might have an impact in terms of how much your increase may be. And again, the concept of finite resources. Overwhelmingly, the educators, certainly not conceding that they wanted to have less of a raise, but they overwhelmingly support the fact that the counselors needed those, that support system and those guidance texts. And I felt like that was important that the board hear that.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. Let's see, a couple others here. On the operations, number fourteen, the adoption of the energy use policy, raising the temperature one degree, two things. One, the estimated savings of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, is that for the one-half of one degree, or is that an actual one degree?
One degree, and I shouldn't say increase. It would be increase or decrease depending on the seasonality, obviously.
Okay, okay.
Changing is a better word.
Okay. And I actually would hope that that number would be larger. One hundred and thirty-three thousand actually seems kind of small to me.
I was a little surprised by the number as well.
Yeah. And then also, in regards to that, did the committee have the opportunity or any discussions with our energy manager, Jennifer Duplessis, and her efforts or anything at all, do you know?
I know that we had some discussion early on about the efforts that have been put in place the last couple of years and some of the successes. Honestly, part of my recollection may be going back to when I served on the committee last year, because I know we had extension discussion, extensive discussion about last year.
Right.
I don't recall we had that much discussion about this year, but I do think that it was addressed upfront as part of our budget discussions.
Okay, okay. And I think, sorry, sorry, Spence. I think that's all I've got. Thank you so much, and I'll leave it for Mr. Pompa. We want to recognize the entire committee, but I'm sure that'll, yeah. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Barron. Mr. Bates, thank you. I think at one point, I think almost all the board up here has served on that committee at some point, we're citizens, so we know how much work goes into it, and we thank you for that. I have to take a moment and thank Mr. Pompa for chairing this committee. He really, you know, as someone who used to be on the committee, he really took a guidance to really, how do we make this more usable, more relevant to the board? So I thank you for that, Mr. Pompa.
Mr. Bates, let me ask you, I want to get into virtual in just a second, but I do want to talk on the guidance techs. I think I agree with you, and the letters from the counselors, it's not a good use of money for what our counselors are doing on the testing procedures. I think we all agree with that, that for the money we pay them and the job duty they have, they should not be handling that testing. Was there much discussion on a reduction in testing of what they could do for that piece?
The question was asked, but the general answer was these are state mandated testing, and we have to test X number of days. There was even discussion, extensive discussion about can we bring in seasonal employees, maybe mothers with young children or stay-at-home moms that may need some part-time work, that could only come in during testing days. There was, I mean, we explored various alternatives. There was discussion about can we have half the techs hired back? But how do you have half the techs if you've got the same tests going on at one elementary school versus another at the same time? There's, so, I mean, I asked the question, can we not schedule around that? And the answer was no, these are mandated dates that we have to test, and so they're happening at every elementary, junior high, or high school level at the same time. So there was exploration, I guess is the best way to put it, of alternatives to just hiring one-hundred percent of the workforce back, but we didn't identify anything that was a viable alternative.
Okay, thank you. I think we know it's an issue and it needs to be addressed. On the virtual, let me ask this, and it may actually go to Ms. Powell a little bit and some of my colleagues. I know at an area school board meeting, I served kind of as a spokesperson when we started talking virtual. And I do know there was just a legislative change by Austin in 2011. Ms. Powell, is there anything that we need to be addressing to be able to gain that revenue that this committee was talking about, that we need to place on our legislative agenda for the 2013 session to have virtual change? What's limiting us from the legislature? And what do we need to be lobbying for right now for the 2013 session to be able to put these two- to three-year virtual plans in place?
Mr. Harvey may be able to speak better to that than, or to that better than I can, but, you know, once we have a course approved, then, you know, we receive the revenue, the tuition for teaching a course through TXVSN based on the number of students who enroll in that course across the state. I don't know that I can say that there are any barriers to, you know, to being able to provide that service based on legislation that is there today, so.
The changes that were made in that last legislative session, really, I think from a funding standpoint, opened up to allow the schools really to set the costs themselves. And so it really, it's handled through TEA, but it's a matter of, it's a tuition-based system now. And so if our students are taking courses, we're paying tuition. If we're providing for students outside the district, we're receiving tuition.
And that is, let me ask you this, the old question to Austin. So let's say we partner, at this meeting I was at, I was with the superintendent of Highland Park, Mandarin Chinese discussion. So it makes pretty good sense if someone wants to take that, how you partner together. Does that tuition go directly to the district that is providing the teacher? Or does that tuition go to Austin and then it finally comes back to us?
It comes to the district. It's handled through TEA, but we set the rate. So if we set the rate, if we were the ones who were going to be offering Mandarin Chinese, we would set the rate per semester at four hundred dollars. If thirty students enroll, then we're going to receive four hundred dollars times thirty students. It's managed through TEA, so they're the ones who are actually, go to those students and make sure they pay, but we receive the funding.
We receive the full funding?
The full funding.
That's pleasant to hear.
It is.
That's shocking to hear, in all honesty. I have, I have to say, I do think, I'll be the first to say on the virtual, with the change and what's occurring and what's coming up, I definitely think we need to have, be addressed further on what virtually the rules are and what we follow.
Absolutely.
I've looked into it, and I still could tell you, I'm not one-hundred percent comfortable of what occurs on all the virtual rules. So I think it's something that we need to advance to. I think during the meeting when y'all were talking on virtual, I was there, a lot of facts came up of how many college students are taking classes, how much, when you get into a job, you are then taking classes and credits through virtual training. And our job is to train the students for real-world examples of what's occurring. And I think more virtual we can offer, the better, and from a cost efficiency standpoint. Those are all the questions I have.
Mr. Hogg, as a follow-up, that's one of the reasons that we kind of staged the different recommendations on virtual. The first year would be take advantage of what's out there, and we would be a user. It'd be a net cost to the district. Perhaps we'd have some savings if we could begin down the process of addressing the smaller classroom size, but to begin to get the labs in place, where we have the hardware in place, begin to market the program, if you will, so to speak, but take advantage of what's out there. But during that same school year, being next year, that we identify and get certified our own courses, where the following year, we then become, can become the provider and get the income, as well as the savings of not having to pay somebody else from the district funds. So that's the reason for the staging.
Mrs. Peña.
Thank you. I too agree with everyone. Thank you so much for all the hard work you've done. The two areas, I also agree with Dr. Reich, this really seems to fall in line with our strategic plan. But there were two areas I wanted to make a comment on, because I've said it before and I'll say it again. I think counselors should do counseling jobs and guidance tech paraprofessionals should do their job. I don't think each one should do the other's job, and I think that's what we've been pushing, and we need to split those back apart and allow them to do their job and be effective. The other thing I wanted to ask, because I go to a lot of the football games, and a number fifteen, where you have it so that the coaches and the extracurricular staff drive buses? When I go to those games, those coaches are so emotionally charged and into the game and running up and down the field, just like the players, and they're just as exhausted as the team when they're done. And to me, I would be concerned of a And to me, I would be concerned of a safety matter for them to be so exhausted and driving those kids on the bus. So this one I have a hard time with because I've watched them and how they can't be so tired, especially if they're doing a long trip. I don't know that it would be worth that savings if they're that tired and then they're driving the bus, or do they not get so emotionally charged? But I can't see that happening. So this is the only one I guess I have some real concerns about, and I don't know if the coaches were even asked about this one.
They were not.
Okay, so, I mean.
I thought they were all going to be here today.
Well, but, I mean, I really, truly, I watch them and they're in there and it's just, I would be worried about the safety concern because they'd be just as exhausted. So that's the only one I had an issue with.
If I could speak again to the mind of the committee, perhaps dating most of the ages of the committee members, at the risk of doing so, most of us when we grew up, all of our junior high and high school coaches were the bus drivers. Mr. Hogg and I went to a school that if a coach gets out of line and there's a yell that says, "Sit down, bus driver," so it's a Texas tradition, see? But, but I, so, I understand your, I mean, I was a youth football coach and I wouldn't want to drive a bus, so, you know, I understand. And I was collegiate football player, so I understand your concern and it's so noted. And I just wanted to give you the explanation that the committee members, most of the people grew up going to athletic events with their coaches driving. That was, and we're looking for some cost savings to offset some other areas that we were spending money.
Thank you. I just had to say that.
I understand.
You had your turn. Dr. Reich.
Well, thank you, President Barron. I appreciate it. I really do. I had another question that I missed. On recommendation 13, as far as recommending the board prioritize across the board raises, prioritize meaning we should put this into the next fiscal budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As far as coming up with that recommendation, did the committee have historical data to base that recommendation on within the district or market data, comparison data, or both? Can you give us a little background on that?
Yes, sir. We had historical data of what has been done in the past, both mandated and non-mandated raises that the district had done, as well as not having a raise last year. We considered the overall morale impact of other cuts as well as not having a raise last year, as well as the increase in the insurance cost to the employees. And then I guess the other thing is we definitely did compare our studies of by steps, if you will, the different ladders, the five-year increments of where we sit compared to other competitive districts close by, as well as other quote-unquote peer districts that were like sized. Particularly note that the entry level area for AISD is one that some people wanted to address, and I'll just make that as a sidebar note for the board to consider. Are we competitive at the entry level? In most instances, I did some calculations, if we had a 1% as an example increase across the board, we would be in the top four districts at the different step levels with the exception of the entry level. And I'm not trying to make an endorsement about a particular amount. I'm just trying to give you an example.
Sure.
But the definitely, and what's not factored into that consideration is moving in the top four is what other districts may be doing. You know, several districts have already announced that they are going to give their people a raise. There's certainly a desire to remain competitive and be competitive, attract the top talent. We also know that there's other things like technology and enhanced workplace that can be good satisfiers in the workplace. It's not all about pay.
Right, right.
But yes, we did consider other data from other districts.
Okay. And then just to expand a little bit on that entry number, where did you find that we fell? Are we below 50?
My recollection is correct, we were like number eight or nine down the category in one of the districts. We asked particularly administrators that are doing the recruiting, you know, do you have a challenge with this? And the answer was, yeah, the recruits go to the tables of the top two or three entry level positions. That's where they go first. And so, you know, the concern of the committee, of course, is do we get a chance to attract the best caliber people if we're not a little bit more competitive at the entry level area?
Right.
We were more competitive at the other steps.
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Let's go with district paying for certification for, secondary certifications for teachers. Was the intent there for the district to pay for teachers to take college classes or to pay for the teachers to take the test to be certified?
For the teachers to take the test to be certified and to give them some type of incentive that was, again, at the board's discretion, that might go beyond that, but the savings potential is substantial when you start talking about the flexibility that it gives the administration to address the small classroom issue.
Okay. Was there any discussion of distance learning versus virtual learning?
There was a acknowledgement of a sensitivity of what I guess most would term is a prior failed distance learning application within the district. And it's felt that technology and the way that virtual learning has developed over the past several years is light-years difference than what the traditional distance learning might have been, application might have been that was used in the school district. But yes, there was an acknowledgement of that. That's why you won't see distance learning mentioned in terms of any of the recommendations.
I noticed it wasn't there. That's why I'm asking the question.
We're drawing a distinction there.
Okay. Because it seems to me that distance learning certainly would be an option for our small class sizes. If we had 10 students who wanted to take a course at Arlington High and 10 more at Bowie, we could match them up with one teacher.
And I agree, and that is one approach towards virtual learning. You could actually have one teacher that's physically in front of a camera and teaching a class. That's one of the applications. There again, that's why we've recommended that a separate committee be formed to analyze how do we maximize the impact of this new, not new, new-to-us educational method.
Okay. And for the virtual learning, for the creation of virtual courses, was the concept there that we would have a TV studio here where we could design and actually film the course? Or would that be done in a classroom?
There was no specific discussion about a TV studio, though that's certainly one of the ways that you could do it. If we, I guess the mandate that we felt like was important is to become the premier provider, again, at the risk of being duplicating what I stated earlier. And that means exploring any and all, what's the best way to deliver the curriculum? How do we engage the students where it's really a meaningful educational experience and an enhancement to their education as opposed to a dilution of their education?
Okay.
But there was no specific discussion about us having a studio.
Was there, financially, was there any discussion of reinstating the insurance cuts from last year?
No, sir. There was no discussion about that.
Okay. In the personnel discussions, did you discuss adding assistant principals back to the high schools or specifically, let's say, to Venture, which does not have an assistant principal?
I'm certainly personally familiar with the Venture application. There was no discussion at the committee level about that.
All right. That's all I've got. Mr. Pop wants to thank you formally on behalf of the board, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Pompa.
Just a moment. I just wanted to thank you also. Thank you, Mr. Bates, for providing the, all of this information to us this evening and to the entire committee. I know how many hours and how many emails and how much work staff has done as well, so I wanted to thank you myself as well. And what are y'all, what is, thank you.
Thank you, President Barron. Thank you, Mr. Bates, for the thorough representation of what the committee dealt with, for the fairness in which you represented thoughts that were probably even contrary to your own opinions, but I thought you did a great job in that, so.
Thank you very much.
I commend you for that. I want to acknowledge those members of the committee that are here tonight, even after putting, I estimated somewhere between 600 and 750 hours of work into this, into this process from all the members, so please stand and be recognized if you don't mind.
I certainly want to thank the administration, not only for the participation and for the time commitment, but for the openness to outside suggestions. Again, just like what we experienced during our strategic planning sessions, there was no defensiveness, there was no protectionism of their processes or systems, very open to new ideas, and that's refreshing. That's great to see because, again, it reinforces the, what we already know, that everyone is focused on improving the system to make sure that we deliver a great educational system for our students. So I think that was phenomenal. And for, thanks to Mr. Charles Brady for his leadership through the meetings. I want to tell you that I'm, I was really excited to serve on this committee because I was a member of it a few years ago, and of course, I am a man of few opinions, so I had a few opinions about it. So I wanted to do some things a little differently. I think Mr. Bowie already recognized, or Mr. Reich recognized, that this committee is the representation of our citizens out there. This is a great way for us to really work with the citizens and understand what the issues and the topics that are important to our citizens out there. I also see this committee as an extension of this board. There's only so many hours that we have to work with, and I think that the additional 500 to 700 hours, we couldn't have put those in here. So you're kind of extending our bandwidth of what we can cover, so I think that's great. I want to make sure that we honor the work, the dedication that every committee member put into the, into this, into this process. And that was one of my promises to the committee when we were out recruiting members. I think we had some, just a great quality of people working on this committee, and that was, that was very reassuring. I want to continue to make sure we attract the best of the best, people that are knowledgeable, involved, and dedicated to our school district. And so our thoughts were that we were going to put some metrics into the process. And so one of our metrics was going to be to establish, this is going to be a baseline, how many of these recommendations would actually be put forward to the board as action items? And the second metric, how many of those recommendations were actually approved? I think if we do our job right through the process of the committee meetings, we should bring actionable, actionable data. And hopefully, with the feedback from the board at the meetings, we can make recommendations that have a realistic possibility of being approved. So our next steps then is our liaison, liaison committee is going to go back, look at these recommendations, the 21 of them, probably group some of those and structure them into an action item that we can recommend to the board. We will work with Mr. Charles Brady as a representation from the committee to make sure that we are true to the spirit and the objective of these recommendations, that we don't come in and change them. All we want to do is structure them so that we can bring them as action items here. We will bring those next, our next board meeting, as action items, and we'll determine then, we'll present them to the board and vote one by one so that the committee can see that the work that they put into it is really making an impact and is changing and affecting the work of the school district, the work of this board, and impacting this budget. So again, thank you very much for your work, your dedication, and for all the great input that you gave us. So thank you very much, President.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Bates, and thank you to the committee. Our next item is the open forum for agenda items. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. And before we go on, if the FFC wants to hit the road, now's the time. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and the trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. And I have five, five cards. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You will have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. Our first speaker is Michelle Shelton. Her subject is FFC recommendation number 37. I hope you'll tell us which one that one was.
I will.
Okay. Good evening.
President Barron, Mr. McCullough, members of the board. My name is Michelle Shelton, and I am a special education teacher at Swift Elementary, and I'm completing my 15th year with the district. And I am addressing you this evening to speak against recommendation number 37 from the Financial Futures Committee, the performance-based pay program. I listened to their discussion on this item, and when committee members were asked for a rationale, those from the corporate world would say, well, that's what's done in the corporate world all the time. But I would remind you that we're not in the corporate world. We're not in the business of mass production of identical products. We're not in a business where everyone starts with the same raw material. And we're not in a business where the same procedures done repeatedly always produce the desired results. We're working with living, breathing children, and the variables are endless in the student population. And I have to wonder how many corporate workers have to take into account whether or not their product had breakfast before they went to school, or were awake all night because the police were at their home, or whose parents decided not to give them their required medication. And as I mentioned, I'm a special education teacher. My students, by definition, come to school with something that hinders their ability to learn. And how can I be equitably judged and paid based on the same performance criteria as a teacher whose classroom includes extremely gifted students? I'm a darn good teacher, and my students do make progress, but it's often measured in baby steps. But they will not progress at the same rate as their average or above-average achieving peers. And so while you're, if, while you're considering this and before implementing a pay-for-performance system, I would ask you to look at the research into the science of motivation if pay, performance pay is indeed intended to, intended to motivate better teaching. For example, research done by a man named Dan Pink, Peak, that I have just begun to look at, his scientifically proven data shows that rewards and incentives do not always produce the desired results. You can hear him on the TED Talks website, and here is a direct quote from him. "If you want people to perform better, you reward them, right? Bonuses, commissions, their own reality show? Incentivize them." But that's not happening here. You've got an incentive designed to sharpen thinking and accelerate creativity, and it does just the opposite. It dulls thinking and blocks creativity. At the FFC meeting this week, I also heard that other school districts have implemented performance-based pay programs, and that was also given as a reason for us to do it. And I would ask you to look for those districts' imperial data over time to see if the desired results are actually being achieved. For example, anybody else here remember Open Concept Schools? Once upon a time, that was the hot new thing and the up-and-coming thing. Lastly, as far as the other districts are doing it rationale, here is a quote from one of the wisest women I know, my mom. "If everybody else is jumping off a cliff, would you do that too?" So ladies and gentlemen of the board, I ask that you not go running and jumping off the cliff into performance-based pay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Our next speaker is Jody Dunn from someplace. Her subject is FFC. Her subject is FFC.
Board of Trustees and Mr. McCullough, my name is Jody Dunn. I'm the elementary counselor at Beckham. I'm also the lead counselor for the Seguin Network. We are here as counselors in response to the FFC's recommendation to hire guidance texts. But what we really need is more than guidance texts. We represent elementary counselors in the over 38,000 elementary students enrolled in AISD. Current testing duties per elementary campus prevent students from receiving preventative and responsive counseling services. We propose the hiring of testing facilitators to completely relieve elementary counselors of all local and state testing duties. Without this responsibility, we can serve students who are at risk, using drugs, failing, neglected, abused, bullied, raped, pregnant, and those with poor social skills and emotional problems. Students who are not in crisis would receive the preventative guidance necessary to be quality producers and competent problem solvers. Just like nurses, diagnosticians, and speech pathologists, we have a certified expertise with master's degrees specific to guidance and counseling. Testing duties violate Texas Education Code Section 33.006, which lists counselors' duties and never mentions testing. Testing duties violate American School Counseling Association's ethical standards, A.4., which is dual relationships. Am I to coordinate testing, or am I to respond to the anxieties and stressors testing places on students? 50% of my salary is paid by comp ed funds. This is a federal expectation that I spend 50% of my time with at-risk students. Currently, over 70% of my time is spent with testing duties. We propose hiring a testing facilitator who holds a teaching certificate, which the state deems necessary to handle secure tests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Our next speaker is Adrian Vaughn, representing the elementary counselors, subject is FFC. Good evening, Ms. Vaughn.
Good evening. Thank you, President Barron, Mr. McCullough, and the board. Thank you for giving us the time to speak this evening. We would like to respond also to, I would like to respond to the information regarding the guidance texts. But I would like to speak specifically to how providing counselors with testing relief is in the best interest of our students with IEPs, our special education students. The current absence of special education counselors assigned to elementary level prevents students with IEPs from receiving equal and adequate counseling services as required by law. It is nearly impossible, given our current testing responsibilities and our counselor-to-student ratios, to provide the services that these students require at the elementary level. Most elementary counselors have little to no special education experience or background. Yet we are required to complete the counseling and behavior assessments, develop social-emotional goals, and write behavior intervention plans, providing all special education counseling services for our students with IEPs. Currently, the special education counselors who are employed by Arlington ISD are allocated solely to junior high and high school. They meet regularly and receive training that we are never offered, or that we are never able to attend, despite our dual role as elementary counselors, as testing coordinators, and also as the special education counselors for elementary students. Elementary counselors are expected to provide these services for our mainstream students with IEPs and those in special programs such as skills and ABLE, which are very specialized areas for which we have not received any specific training. We have very limited support in these areas. We have special programs on our campuses, on our elementary campuses, with no specialized counselors available for those students. As a result, our students with IEPs at the elementary level are not afforded the same services that they would receive in surrounding districts, or that they receive at the elementary and junior high level. We are recommending that the district hire special education counselors at the elementary level, or reallocate special education counselors already employed by the district to provide these counseling services. Additionally, if counselors, if elementary counselors were relieved of some of our testing duties, we might be better able to serve these students with IEPs as required by law. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Our next speaker is Phyllis Gebhardt, representing elementary counselors, subject is FFC.
Good evening, President Barron and Mr. McCullough and the school board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am Phyllis Gebhardt, the counselor at Short Elementary. I'm also the lead counselor for the Arlington Elementary Network. I'm here to address the FFC agenda item of hiring guidance texts. The current elementary counselor, student ratios as compared to junior high and high school and the surrounding districts prevents equal access to guidance and counseling per The solution to hire additional certified counselors to reduce the ratio of counselors to students at the elementary level to a maximum of 1 to 500. The Texas Education Code states that a school district shall employ at least one counselor for every 500 elementary students in the district. High school ratios in AISD, the lowest is 1 to 272 students at Seguin, and the highest is 1 to 427 students at Bowie. Bowie High School also employs additional seven specialized counselors. The current junior high ratios in AISD shows the lowest 1 to 287 at Workman, and the highest 1 to 512 at Barnett. Elementary ratios in AISD, our lowest is 1 to 508 students at Butler, and the highest is one counselor to 1,121 students at Crouch. TEA Best Practices recommends 250 student caseload on an at-risk campus and 300 on other campuses. Students in our district are not allowed equitable counseling services from building to building. This keeps our district in a constant state of reactive behavior, dealing with consequences instead of providing the foundation of a solid guidance program which is preventative and proactive. Our recommendation for each campus, over 500 student enrollment, to have a part-time or a full-time counselor to close the gap on the counselor-to-student ratio. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gebhardt. Our final speaker during the open forum is Mr. Larry Shaw from UEA, talking about the Financial Futures Report. Good evening, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board. Long, long time ago, I served on something called the CBRC. And I sat through many of those nights, too, where we argued and we debated on what was going on. And most of that agenda, too, when it came down to it, was still with salaries. Salaries is usually about 85% plus of the budget of any school district. And so you've got to look at it and say, okay, what are we going to do? Before you, we've already handed out, is the UEA salary comparison of comparative districts in the Western Metroplex. There's another one for the Eastern Metroplex as well. We look at that, and we say, okay, we know AISD has eight districts, and some of those are like Mesquite. Nobody's going to Mesquite from Arlington. They're not going to communicate that way. What we do is we look at the districts around here, someone could jump in a car and drive every morning and leave. And you see 31 of those. And then we say, where does Arlington rate? At the beginning level, Arlington rates 14th. That is nothing to be proud of. 14th. And most of the districts around us in Tarrant County are much higher, especially the major districts. A 1% raise is not going to put you in the top four, when HEB is $3,500 above our beginning teachers. But I'll tell you what's even worse. A teacher in Arlington who has taught five years will not make as much money as a beginning teacher in HEB, Irving, Northwest, Kennedale, Mansfield. A five-year teacher will not make the same money as a teacher walking out of college into those school districts. And what is even sadder, a teacher with eight years of experience will not make as much money as a teacher just walking in for their first day into HEB and Irving. A 1% raise? Yeah, right. It's not going to get us anywhere close. The sad thing is, we're becoming the lowest-paying major district in Tarrant County. We're falling further and further behind. Now, you can imagine, when five-year teachers in Arlington hear that they're so far behind, the beginning teachers in six major districts right here make more than they do. I'll tell you what is amazing. Kennedale. I'm sure Sherri Wade is very, very happy. Because if you look at Kennedale, they start out number five at zero years of experience, number one at five, number one at 10, number one at 15, number one at 20, number three at 25, and number one at 30. They put their children first. They went out, they went to their taxpayers, and they said, we need a TRE. Kennedale has no business to speak of. Kennedale has rooftops. That's about it. And they went to their folks, and they said, we want to be competitive. You can't get teachers when you start out at 14th. This goes to all the college kids around here. And unfortunately, like the gentleman from the FFC said, they look at the ones at the top, and that's where they go. We have a major, major problem at the beginning level. Well, we can't stop there. We have a major problem at every step of the salary schedule, and we're falling behind every year. Guys, we've got to do something. We've got to step up. 1% is not going to cut it. It's just not going to get us where we need to go. Merit pay? You've got to get even before you can start talking about merit pay. I work with districts that have merit pay. They hand out 10 millions. It's expensive, every year, 10 million dollars on top of the salary schedule. It doesn't work that way. Virtual learning? You've still got to have a teacher in the classroom, or it's nothing more than TV. So these ideas are good to think about. But the first thing we've got to do is we've got to recruit teachers who want to come here. We cannot become the district of last choice. And to many people sitting in college classrooms and sitting in other districts around us that we would want to recruit, they're looking at this salary schedule. And you know what? Many of our own teachers are looking at this salary schedule, saying, can you believe it? A teacher in six districts around us made more the day they entered that classroom than I do, and I have five years of experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. And that closes our open forum. Next on the agenda are the action items. Oh, thank you, counselors, for coming in. I appreciate it. First action item is consider approval of teacher probationary and term contracts. Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, President Barron. Each year, we bring this to the board to approve the probationary contracts. It could be probationary one, or two, or three, and then the term contracts. And the administration is recommending approval of the term contracts and probationary contracts.
Need a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hogg, second by Mrs. Sullins. Is there any discussion? All members present voting in the affirmative, the motion passes. Mr. Hibbs is away on work. Thank you. Next item, Mr. McCullough, is consider notice of election.
President Barron, members of the board, you have before you the notice of election for the trustee election to be held May 12, 2012. The election is being held to elect members to three-year terms for places one, and two, and three on the board of trustees. The notice of election shall be published in a newspaper published in the territory that is covered by the election at least once, not earlier than the 30th day or later than the 10th day before Election Day. The notice of election shall state the date of the election, each place to be filled, the location of each early voting, and Election Day polling locations, the dates and hours of early voting, and the hours of the polls will be open on Election Day. If you approve the notice of election, it will be appropriate here a motion at this time.
Move to approve.
Hold on. Mr. Hogg.
I move to approve the general, approve the notice of election for the May 12, 2012 general election for places one, two, and three on the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Hogg, second by Mrs. Peña. Is there any discussion on the election? All members voting in the affirmative, the motion passes. Thank you. Next is to consider and possible action regarding closed session discussion regarding student and consultation with board's attorney relating to pending litigation petitioner versus Arlington Independent School District, Texas Education Agency Docket Number 142-SE-0112. I move to approve the superintendent's action on behalf of the district in the proceeding petitioner versus Arlington Independent School District, Texas Education Agency Docket Number 142-SE-0112, as recommended by the administration and the board's attorney.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Barron, second by Mrs. Sullins. Any discussion? All members present voting in the affirmative, the motion passes. Next item is to consider and possible action regarding closed session discussion regarding student and consultation with board's attorney relating to pending litigation petitioner versus Arlington Independent School District, Texas Education Agency Docket Number 125-SE-0112. I move to approve the superintendent's action on behalf of the district in the proceeding petitioner versus Arlington Independent School District, Texas Education Agency Docket Number 125-SE-0112, as recommended by the administration and the board's attorney. Motion by Mr. Barron, second by Mrs. Sullins. Is there any discussion? All members present voting in the affirmative, the motion passes. Next is items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda?
President Barron, board members, Mr. McCullough, good evening again. There are four bids on the agenda for your consideration this evening. And in all cases, the administration is recommending the lowest bids and the bids representing the best value to the district. And it's also my privilege this evening to report that our schools have received donations from the following individuals and organizations. The Arlington High School Baseball Booster Club, Arlington High School Football Booster Club, the Arlington High School Golf Booster Club, Arlington High School Choir Booster Club, Arlington High School Theater Booster Club, the Arlington Kiwanis Foundation, Arlington High School Cheerleading Booster Club, Extreme Services Unlimited, Lamar High School Football Booster Club, Lamar High School Band Booster Club, Wolf Brand Chili, Lamar High School Softball Booster Club, the Martin High School Cross Country and Track Booster Club, Martin High School Softball Booster Club, Martin High School Tennis Booster Club, Arlington North Star Kiwanis Club, First United Methodist Church, Corey Elementary PTA, the Intermec Foundation, Dawn Painter Photography, Picture Day, Mint Condition, and Dollar Tree Store. The donations presented for consideration this evening are $42,026, which brings our year-to-date total of $664,185.
Thank you, Mrs. Powell, and thank you to our generous Thank you, Mrs. Powell, and thank you to our generous community for their contributions to the AISD. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Reich, second by Mrs. Peña. Is there any discussion on the consent? All members present voting in the affirmative, the consent passes. Next item is MGT of America Cost Containment Update, options 5-5 through 5-7, and 6-1 through 6-7. Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, President Barron. Tonight, we're bringing again some of the options in the MGT of America Cost Containment Update, and I believe Mr. Harvey and Mr. Walker are going to be doing options 5-5 through 5-7, and 6-1 through 6-7.
President Barron, Superintendent McCullough, members of the board, tonight we have three items remaining in Chapter Five on Technology from the MGT report. 5-5 is to examine the offerings of the various online learning providers, determine which would serve the district best, and encourage teachers to take courses from the preferred vendors. In this year, we have begun to look and utilize many online vendors for some staff development opportunities. What we found is, there is no one vendor that's going to provide everything that we need. Some of the examples of things we've looked at is something you may have heard of called Project Share. Project Share is provided, is a framework that's really provided by TEA for both online staff development of teachers and actually coursework by students. Some of the examples of things we've used Project Share for would be in our ESL department, they put their staff development regarding the new ESL textbooks online, and had their ESL teachers taking those courses. The TLI grant that we recently were just awarded, all of the staff development that our teachers will be taking will be available to them online via this product as well. There's many STAR tests, staff developments for teachers as well. So it's an opportunity for both region service centers and TEA to put material online, and for our own departments to also put opportunities online. In addition, some of the other examples that we're looking at for next year, the curriculum department this year has looked at a product that has staff development, a wide range of staff development from instructional issues, discipline issues, and some technology as well. They have evaluated that this year, and our plan is to implement that at our high school as a part of the PLC process that they'll be going through next year related to the additional time that they have teaching six out of eight. On 5-6 is to modify the training program such that there is only one campus technology trainer per school, and we implemented that last year. We went from having two to four technology trainers to having one liaison per campus. I mean, it has not reduced the number, and amount, and opportunities our teachers have had. It really changed the role that that person served. They now are the ones who coordinate and schedule the staff development and find other teachers who potentially are teaching those things. So in the past, the technology trainers provided all of the staff development. Now, the liaison coordinates that staff development and finds other teachers and provides some themselves. And that was implemented for the current school year. And 5-7 is to implement a program that involves students as providers of technical support for their schools. We started off this looking at, talking with our Career and Technology Department to see if there were some programs that we might have in place where we could utilize students to provide some of that technology support. And what we discovered was that they actually used to have both technical support and some network support courses that had been in place. But because of low enrollment, those are actually some of the courses that were removed back in about 2010. They were in place for about five years, and there was good curriculum, we had good teachers, but there just was not enough enrollment to continue those programs. So instead, what we've done is started to work with some of our land techs on the high school, and we'll work with our scheduling assistant principals for some of those teachers, I'm sorry, some of those students who have an off period, who sometimes are classroom aides, to try to identify some of those students who could work with our land techs to provide some technology support within the campus. And we're working to put together some guidelines and the kinds of work that they could and could not be allowed to do. And so that's a program that we'll have, hopefully have in place for the next school year. So that's the three that we have this week on technology.
Dr. Reich?
Mr. Harvey, I just wanted to clarify on 5-6. Basically, with the repurposing, I guess, of staff, are these numbers, as far as dollars saved, are they applicable, or are we not achieving this dollar, then?
We're not going to achieve what MGT did, because when they made their recommendation to remove, go from two to four, depending on the campus, trainers to one, when they did their calculation, they actually said that we wouldn't pay the stipend which that person receives, and we would not be paying them, we also paid for the courses that they taught. Well, we still have to teach the courses. We still have that need. So that we're not realizing that portion of the savings. We're realizing the savings of the stipend for all those people who we're not paying a stipend to, to be trainers, but we are still providing trainers. We still pay for whoever it is that's teaching the courses. So we're, the money we see there, that the district has recognized, is based on the stipends, not on the courses themselves.
But it's that dollar amount, though? Or is it a different dollar?
The $80,250 is what we are realizing in the current year.
Okay. And extrapolate times five?
Times, yeah, times five is going to be the $160,000.
Okay. Thank you.
I am here to present the security portion of the MGT report. 6-1, states recognize, reorganize the Safety and Security Department, and we have eliminated nine security positions and one gang specialist position for a savings of $289,000. And if we don't hire any other, an additional staff for the next five years, that savings will be approximately $1.5 million. 6-2, eliminate assigned security officers to the high school Saturday programs and junior high schools Thursdays programs. We have several students that we assign to these programs, and we also have other activities that are going on. We have tutoring and some extracurricular activity programs that are going on at the same time that Saturday and Thursday schools are going on. So we require our officers to also monitor and provide security for those programs as well. So we, we don't feel like we can eliminate security at those programs, but we have made some adjustments, and we realize the saving of $25,000 by the adjustment that we've made. 6-3, reduce the working years for 25 officers' positions from 261 days to 180 days. And we have officers during the time that school is not in session, we still have activities going on at our schools during the holiday seasons. We have athletic events and other things that are going on during holidays and spring break. We also provide security for our summer school sessions, as well as scheduled pickup and registration. We also require our officers to go through training sessions during the summer. So this is also something that we don't feel like we can do, eliminate 261 to 180 days. 6-4, review all Safety and Security Department forms and develop a plan to utilize technology to handle routine reports, requests for service, and other forms and processes to increase efficiency and reduce the space required for storing accumulated documents. And we have reviewed and updated our forms, and is researching the appropriate software that will help us to manage our forms electronically. 6-5, purchase a computer-assisted recording system for incoming calls to the Safety and Security Dispatcher, and this is something that we have done. We have purchased a recording system for $1,500, and MGT recommended one for $10,000. So that is a savings. 6-6, convert vehicle use records to an electronic format and use a data management tool for record-keeping, and reduce safety and security of vehicle mileage by carefully regulating routine patrols during the day, including those days when schools are not in session. And we are also, the software that we are using for recommendation 6-4 will also be used to track our mileage for the recommendation for 6-6. 6-7, revise the contract with the Arlington Police Department to address the February 8, 2010 option of the School Resource Officers Evaluation Red Efficiencies Subcommittee. And we did reduce that budget. We eliminated a sergeant position for a savings of $83,129. So that concludes my report.
Mr. Hogg.
Thank you. Real quick, Mr. Walker, that first one on 6-1, reorganize the Safety and Security Department, that's much more savings than MGT even expected for us to achieve. It's outstanding. Love seeing savings. But you also have to look at the flip side of, have we had an increase in property crime? Do you feel like we're still providing the safety of not only our students and our staff, but also for our property, our assets that we have out there? What's the results been from that, with that reorganization of much larger savings?
Well, I don't really see that, you know, and I haven't looked at statistics, but I don't see that, that we're having any additional crimes this year opposed to other years. I know that we had, we've had some several break-ins before we reduced our security staff, and we haven't had near as many since we reorganized. So keep that pretty accurate.
You don't feel like we've, we're vulnerable because of?
No, not at the present time.
Okay.
And that is something that we are monitoring. And if it happens, then we'll probably make some recommendations to increase it. But right now, we think that we are maintaining it.
By all means, if there's, I think we have to have the flexibility of, when things occur, how do we react, whether it's excess student fights at certain schools, because sometimes issues can spike, and we need those roaming officers to do that? Or as we, I think we faced not too long ago, we had a little string of someone out there who liked taking copper from our air conditioning unit. So I think we do need that flexibility. I love seeing that savings, but at what risk? I always ask that.
Mr. McCullough.
There is, where we monitor it, we had some theft at one of our elementary schools, and it's something that we became, you know, noticed, and we added additional cameras into some vulnerable areas that we hope will take care of that theft problem. And as we look at each campus, we'll make adjustments. It may be cameras, it might be something else, lighting, or more patrols, there's all sorts of things. But I know Mr. Walker monitors that carefully, and will come to me. In fact, he came to me about the cameras and said, and so we have good communication there with the schools and the security staff.
Mr. Papa?
Thank you, President Barron. Mr. Walker, I am learning, as I spend a little bit more time here on the board, that you are an understated overachiever. Congratulations. That's fantastic. Great job for your department. That's good. I love seeing that, because we can utilize those resources and programs and activities that we know give us real return on, in terms of the education of our students. On 6-3, so you still have it on the district will study, but I'm hearing you saying you don't really plan to do it? So do we need to move that over to, we're not going to do it?
Yes, and we did look at it, and we just feel like that's something that, we can't compromise safety for our kids during summer school and during the time that we're not in session, that we have athletic events, basketball tournaments, baseball tournaments, the thing, to see the athletic events that are in session, season, during that time, we can't compromise that. So we feel like that that's something that we don't need to study, we don't need to do at this time.
So no room going from 180 to maybe 225, 230, you know, being more strategic, like obviously you were as part of 6-1? Anything in that area where we could maybe?
And that is, you know, that's something we definitely can look at, and if we can see where we can do that, it's something we could implement next, next school year.
That'd be great. And then the other part is, I would like to see, from an accounting standpoint, making sure that we're charging the cost of those security and safety officers to those programs that are occurring, so whether it's sports, or extracurricular, or summer school, so that we're clear what those programs do cost overall, including the safety and security. That's not going to save us any money, but it gives us a better understanding which each of the, how much each of these programs cost to us. So, yeah, true cost. And that's it. That's all I got for you. Congratulations. Great job.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Papa? You know, in the morning, we'll have a debrief of assistant superintendents, and the statements you made, we're going to hear again. Understated overachiever. He may have a sign in my office in the morning. But I agree with you. Mr. Walker does tremendous amount of work, and he doesn't, a lot of times, people don't notice it. And I appreciate you saying that. I know you did. But I do appreciate you bringing it to everybody's attention, because he really does a wonderful job of, of working with security and also his other duties. And, and he handles a lot of problems that never make it to me or to this board. So thank you for saying that.
And if you save 1.2 million dollars, we'll do all kinds of stuff. We'll make any kind of comments. Those are good things.
We'll buy you a sign.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. We now come to our open forum for non-agenda items. The second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. I have one card from the audience. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You will have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation, and when the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. Our one card tonight is Wendy Grossbender, representing Ballet Frontier of Texas, subject to school outreach program Nutcracker Performance. Wendy?
Speak up, Wendy.
I'm going to talk about ballet? I don't think so. Last chance for Wendy. Superintendent's report. Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. I have a short report tonight, but it's, it's got some very good information in it. And we were notified this week that the Arlington ISD Fine Arts Program was again named one of the best communities for music education in 2012. This is ninth consecutive year, Fine Arts Program received the designation.
District.
The whole district.
Whole district, right.
Elementary, high school, junior high, orchestra, band, choir. Also, 22 students from Lamar and Martin High Schools advanced to the 32nd Annual Texas History Day Contest in Austin after winning in Region 21 meet held at University of Texas Arlington. One of the Lamar students has a special connection to our board. She's the daughter of Dr. Reich. So congratulations to her and all of her other students at Lamar and Martin. So, and that state contest will be held May 4th and 5th, and so congratulations to all the winners, and good luck at state. So, better to bring home a state championship.
Let's hope so. Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Board members' reports. Mr. Papa?
I do have a report to make. Sorry, I do have a report to make, but I need Spencer's assistance in this, and is it Spence coming up here to put the video on, or somebody else doing it?
I'm studying.
Okay.
There you go.
I attended Remensy Elementary STAR Testing Pep Rally, so this is designed to get the kids excited and thinking about doing their best for the STAR test. And I, and I got to tell you, the clip that they sent me really isn't the one that I was looking for. That's me up there talking, and the guy, Willie Pyle, was another of the guest speakers, and he did a phenomenal job in getting the kids excited about doing their best. And he did a phenomenal job in getting the kids excited about doing their best during a star test. He led them through a cheer. Willie Pyle was, is, is a football player with the Canadian League for the Toronto team. He played for the Dallas Cowboys 2005, 2006. Before that, he played for, I'm not, the Chiefs, Kansas City Chiefs. So, but overall, the job that Remensy and Principal Matt Brown, this program was already in there before he got there, but he supported it and, and given it a lot more resources to, to make it a great program. These are the types of things that we want to make sure and get out to the media, to the community, let them know that there's some amazing things going at these schools and throughout the district. So I just wanted to share that with you. Enjoyed it tremendously. Enjoyed being there, being part of that. And I want to try to be out there for when they start the star testing, because those kids were excited. They were excited to have us there. And so hopefully, that'll translate into some great performance during our, during our testing. Thank you, President Barron.
Mrs. Pena.
First of all, I would, I want to apologize, because it's going to be a little bit long, what I'm going to say, but I, I really want to say this, but I'll keep it as short as I can. On April 3rd, a devastating event occurred at my home in which the tornado hit. And we were really blessed, though, because our daughter was sitting in the house when it occurred, and she's fine. The house is just a thing, and the items we lost were just stuff. But true heroes came out of that. I will tell you that a community came together and really made me feel even more blessed. That night, people from my office came, but our superintendent, Peter Barron, Tony Pampa, and John Hibbs were there immediately. Our superintendent stood at the door, and there were people who descended upon us like vultures, trying to get business, whether they were good people or bad people. But he was at the door. Peter and John ran to, I don't know if it's Home Depot or Lowe's or wherever they ran, but they got plywood and the things needed to board up and secure my home. And then it was getting late, and Peter and Jerry left, and Tony rides up on his white horse. And he and, and John proceeded to start boarding up my house so that I would be at peace, knowing that my home was safe. And when they were getting down to the last U, and they were on a roll, I'll tell you, got a call from Dr. Reich. He was in his car, ready to come, but the boys said they had it. Don't worry, don't come. Next day, Jamie called to help, see if she could pack things up. I mean, this is a group of people coming together to help me out. Catherine Wildman showed up at my house, the city councilwoman, to make sure that we, I had what I needed. Good Samaritans who've parked, or saw their big vehicle parked over here at the Fielder Road Church, they came to my house and helped clean up debris. Arlington firefighters came by three, four times during the, the days to follow, just to check to make sure everybody was okay in their homes. The Arlington police stepped up their patrols. The youth at my church, St. Vincent's, came by and cleaned up more debris. The men's club at my church offered and came to help. The downtown Rotary was checking on me constantly. People called and emails came in. The city of Arlington went above and beyond in cleaning up the debris in our, on our streets so cars could pass and, and all the tree limbs. They, we were told, if you take them to the curb, they'll take it. But they did more than that. They went into yards and cut down trees and, and took them. They really were helpful. So this was a community that really came together for those of us in, in need. Now, I, I still don't have my house, and we'll be out three to four months. But again, they're just things. They're just things. My daughter still is traumatized. I'm not having her come to the house during the construction, because the noise really bothers her. But we'll get through that as well. I just wanted to take the time to publicly say thank you. Oh, don't want to leave out Bowie. Bowie went out and helped somebody that same night. So he was out there helping the community, too. But I just want to say that I really do appreciate it. We, we work together, and we sit together, and we make decisions for the community. But when it came down to it, they were there, front and center. You know, my first responders, so to speak, because I really needed it. And I was in awe, and I was in total shock, to be honest with you. My, my coworkers told me they knew I was, because I was walking around my own house with my purse on my shoulder, and I wouldn't let it go. And so they told me later that they, they knew. It was a horrible experience for my daughter, and I was on her, the phone with her during that entire time, and it was awful to hear. So I understand what she went through. I kind of felt like I was there with her. So again, I, I thank you for indulging me, but I want you guys to know that these guys were my heroes, and I really appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Other board members. Dr. Reich.
Hard to follow that. This is a rebuttal, right? No, it's not at all. I, to add on to that, I think we all can agree that our, our district and our city has handled that natural disaster situation with utmost stellar class. What, anything that we have heard has been 100% positive on the city's response and our district's response. So I really thank, thank God that we live in the community that we live in to be able to have all the graces shown during that tragedy. So I just wanted to say that. I also wanted to comment that I attended a first-rate luncheon today, first-rate living luncheon that the Arlington Alliance for Youth helped out with as well. And the function of that is to recognize and award individuals through adults that help our youth through, whether it's volunteering or professionally. And it was really, really moving to hear Nate Hearn, Dr. Nathaniel Hearn, who's from HEB ISD. He gave an extremely moving testimony regarding his own personal experience and what he has done to impact the lives of youth through his assistant principal days. He's now over truancy. I was with, I believe, doing things with dropout prevention. And I know he's done things with our staff here in this district as well. But it was a, and he's also one of the coaches and that was involved, that created Friday Night Lights coming to be. So anyway, his, his testimony was just another example of how it just takes one person and their effort to change the lives of any one given child. And I, I hear Mr. McCullough mention that all the time. It's that relationship between the teacher and the student. And, and it really is. And I, I just, I, I can't present it as well as you, you did have to be there. But there were many of us that were moved to either tears or almost tears, listening to him. It was just very great. Above and beyond that, the, the purpose and the, the mission and message of that luncheon today, very similar to United Way, which Mr. Hogg's probably going to discuss in his report, if he's giving a report, is that there are so many youth organizations out there that are in this together with us. The "It Takes a Village" mantra, and that's what it was all about today. And I'm just so, so pleased that we have so many, so many organizations in our community that are stepping up to help us with our youth. And that's something that we will expand upon as much as we humanly possibly can through our strategic plan that we're currently developing. So I just wanted to share that. I also wanted to share a, the results of the junior high chess tournament through AISD. There were nine junior highs, including Oak Ridge, outside of the district. And the top three in this order were Workman, Nichols, and Carter. So congratulations to those junior highs and those chess teams. Yes, Carter principal right there. And this is a little bothersome for me to do, but I did want to recognize the, the top chess players. I'm somewhat embarrassed. My son is one of the number one. There was two number ones. So I'll have to say Jacob, I'm sure you're not watching, but Jacob Reich from Shackelford and from Nichols, Andre, and I apologize if I'm butchering this name, Le Boullec. Boule, it's B-O-U-L-L-U-E-C. So congratulations to those individuals, as well as all the other children that participated. It's really a great thing that, that we have those types of things occurring in our district. So congratulations. That's all I have.
All the other children that are crying because your son won. I see how it is, Dr. Reich. Congratulations to your son. I know he got the brains from your wife.
I wholeheartedly agree.
That is, that is a nice honor, Dr. Reich. Both, on a serious note, both your children were honored for two very good programs tonight. So that is a very nice honor. I would thank you to my colleagues, everyone that was able to attend. We did have the United Way of Arlington report to the community. And I think everyone saw, you know, with all the board there, almost all the city council, the mayor, our state reps, state senators, the importance everyone's taking in education. Education's not just the teachers, it's not just the staff, it's not just the administrators, it's not just the board, it's not just the parents. You got to have everyone focusing on it. And one of the main reports that come out from, that we've heard already from reports to the community is, you know, what are kids doing after school time? Out of school time, you know? To a lot of kids, we are their parents during school, and then we send them on their way after school or after sports, and they have those many hours. And so I think United Way have to thank them a lot for the focus. And this is an outstanding group that's really focusing on, how do we help those children that have the health and human services issues, which is truly the core of a majority of issues that occur in this district? So I think everyone that was able to attend and support us for United Way of Tarrant County. The last piece I have to talk about real fast is, last night, we were able to attend the last meeting of the year for the North Texas Area Association of School Boards. So, you know, what, every three months, once a quarter, all the school boards get together throughout the entire DFW area. There's many nights we've driven to Denton, we've driven to McKinney, we've driven to Frisco. Luckily, last night, we only had to drive to Mansfield. We were able to attend, four of us were able to attend. Some others had other previous engagements. And we didn't know, but this whole year, they keep attendance. And we knew we had to sign in, but we didn't realize there was an award at the end of the year. And whoever had the highest attendance won a cash prize for the district. And Mr. McCullough's there. We thought we were going to fix the budget with that $500 prize that we won. But we didn't win. We came in third, which is outstanding for attendance from our board throughout the year. But not only did we come in third, we came in third and only lost by second place by one person, and then lost first place by one more person that could have attended. So those that didn't show up, I'll hold them unto you. We could have been in first place. If two more people had shown up, maybe next year, we'll know they're keeping attendance and, and there's an award. But I thank you. This really is a great event. It allows us, once that quarter, you know, we live in our world, and we interact with other trustees throughout the state through some of our training, through TASB, through CRSS. It's a nice time to really interact with those other trustees in surrounding districts, because while we do have a little level of competition between each other, we're all trying to reach the same goal, and it really helps us to all bounce ideas off of each other and see what other districts are doing, and have that collegial spirit from all of us in education. So I thank everyone that's been able to attend throughout this whole year.
Mrs. Solis.
Thank you, President Barron. Earlier tonight, Mr. Pampa talked about some unsung heroes, and I wanted to, I had some I wanted to tell you about. I had the pleasure to spend a couple of hours on the Turning Point High School campus. And what a remarkable operation. The students that are assigned to Turning Point, it's a disciplinary campus, and so it's a, the depth of commitment of the professionals on that campus is apparent when you walk in the door. I, so I just want to have a shout out to the unsung heroes at Turning Point High School. What a great job. And also, Mr. McCullough's the cleanest school I've ever seen. So a shout out also to the people who help out with that. Thank you.
I just have two things. First, this is tax week. In my building, we're testing math on Tuesday and Wednesday, and science Thursday, and social studies Friday. So if your son or daughter is taking tax this week, get them to bed early, feed them a good breakfast, and pat them on the back and tell them, we expect them to do their best. No, better than their best. High schools are taking tax. And my last item is, I really want to thank the board for showing up at 4:00 today for our early meeting. I appreciate it. We got a lot done. And hopefully, we won't have to do that very often. That's it. We are not going into closed session. We are adjourned.